We'll call the meeting to an end. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know it was the board's intention not to have any items on the agenda tonight other than the report coming from the investigator. However, we had some issues that require some votes, and they had to be taken before we have our next scheduled meeting, so we have several on that we have to deal with. The first is to accept a donation from the Worcester Regional Association of Realtors, Dr. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to announce that some backpacks were donated from the Worcester Regional Association of Realtors. These were for Y.A. Village School. It's a generous donation of backpacks full of supplies for students, and as was the case with the previous donation of backpacks, school nurses are usually the ones to see the need in the building and then hand them out accordingly. So I would like to present this for your approval of accepting the donation.
Any questions? If not, the chair would adjourn to motion to approve.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion by Vinnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, we head on a motion to vote and accept the wellness policy. We had one member that wasn't present at the workshop when that was discussed, and a couple of other questions had come up. I know Coller is here to answer those, but I think a better way to go forward is members that have any last questions, if you'd followed them, to Dr. Crowe by the end of this week so that she can sit with Coller, get answers to it, and I would ask a motion to table, and I'll put it on the next agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie to table, second.
Second.
Second by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is the emergency response plan. Are there any questions in regards to that? If not, a motion to approve by Wendy.
One quick question. Through the evacuation procedure, the incident commander has mentioned a lot. Who is the incident commander? Are those appointed people per school?
Dr. Crowe.
Actually, I'd like to defer to Ms. Chioda, who's...
Ms. Chioda, would you come to the podium, please?
So the incident commander is appointed by the building administrator, and it's the person that's responsible for organizing all of the responses within the school in an emergency.
Okay, just to follow up.
Wendy.
Is there a backup in case this person is out?
Again, through the administrator, there's a series of folks that have responsibilities when an emergency occurs.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Angela, second.
Second.
Second by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is a motion and vote of approval for the elementary handbook pending any questions. Anyone have any questions? Heather.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Chioda.
Dr. Crowe, who's handling the handbook?
Mr. Tomlin and Ms. Stanlin.
Mr. Tomlin, could you come down to the podium? You here? Here we go. Yep. Thank you. Heather?
I was just wondering if you had a chance to speak with Ms. Chioda about the special education services page in the handbook?
I have not. We'd like the approval here, and then we can put them in as addendums where they see fit in the special ed portion of it. It's just been with beginning of school, we haven't got to that yet.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions in regards to it? If not, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, Jody Barassa with a request for a dance at Knox Trail. Jody?
So on September 25th, we'd like to have our first dance of the school year. It's going to be run by peer leaders. Because of the young crowd, I'd like to have basically two times. Fifth and sixth grade will go from 6:00 to 7:30, and then 7th and 8th will go from 7:30 to 9:00. $5 admission, we'll have to collect at the door, and there'll be baked goods to sell during the dance.
Questions? Hearing none, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you, Jody. The next item on our report is in regards to the investigative report. Before we get to that, the chair would like to make a statement. On June 16th, 2015, the former interim treasurer of the school district presented a report to the school committee regarding his review of certain district accounts and expenditures, and in it, he raised questions about the legitimacy of approximately 85 transactions in the student activities account. As a result of the report of the interim treasurer, the school committee authorized an investigation and appointment of an outside investigator to review the student activity accounts for the last two years. On a unanimous vote, this committee appointed Attorney Robert Henigan, who is a former city solicitor of Worcester, as the investigating officer. The school committee is aware, over the last several months through various social sources, of statements that the school committee, or its members, or the district's administration initiated this investigation on its own for no legitimate purpose. There is no truth to that allegation. As the appropriating body of the regional school district, the school committee has a legal obligation to act on reports of irregularities in the district accounts and expenditures. It would be remiss in not doing so in a violation of our fiduciary responsibility. The investigation was authorized by unanimous vote, that's all seven members of this committee, as a result of a notice provided by the former interim treasurer of alleged irregularities in the student activities account expenditures. The school committee has scheduled this special meeting to hear the investigating officer's report on his investigation. Attorney Henigan is here tonight to present the findings of his investigation to the committee, and ask Attorney Henigan to come to the podium. While he's doing that, we will pass out the copies of the reports that were provided to us tonight by Attorney Henigan. If you just pass them down, please. There is not. Attorney Moskis, could you please address, there's a question from the public as to whether there's copies for the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Does everybody have a copy?
Mr. Chairman, after this meeting, this document will be a public record, and it will be in the office of the superintendent. Any member of the public can request a copy of that. The district has to, it's a public record request, the district has 10 days to respond. The district has the right to charge, a copying charge, for the document. I understand the document is over 300 pages, and that the district will provide people who pay the copying charges, should provide people paying charges, a copy of the document as requested.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henigan? Excuse me. Excuse me. There is no questions from the audience. There is no questions from the audience. Would you like to stay for the meeting? Mr. Henigan?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening to you and to members of the committee. For the record, my name is Robert Henigan, and I have a law practice in the city of Worcester. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, on June 24th of 2015, this committee authorized an investigation of financial expenditures from student activity accounts in various schools within the Spencer-East Brookfield Regional School District for the academic years 2013-2014 and 2014-2015. I was appointed to conduct such an investigation. It's my understanding, in addition to what you commented on, Mr. Chairman, that such an investigation is a consequence, at least in part, of a previous report issued in June of 2015, prepared by Mr. Frank Clavario of Consulting Partners, Inc. Mr. Clavario's report involved a global review of financial management work in the district. In his report, however, he reviewed previous student activity accountings and made several observations about the inappropriateness of certain expenditures. His report did not, however, examine in detail the types of expenditures made, or the reasons such expenditures were made from student activity accounts. This investigation concentrated solely on an examination of the types and reasons for the expenditures made from student activity accounts over the two academic years previously mentioned. The report before you examines selected expenditures from the student activity accounts at David Proudy High School. Account investigations of other schools in the district may be warranted once further review of those accounts is completed and a determination made as to whether or not questionable expenditures exist in those accounts. The report before you, though, deals with findings of this investigation from David Proudy High School. The primary purpose of this investigation was to review the activity account expenditures to determine, one, whether the item or the services purchased was for district purposes; two, whether the item purchased or service obtained was in fact used by the district; and three, whether the expenditure made was for a student activity purpose. In addition to those primary questions, I was asked to identify any expenditure which involved fundraising. When fundraising activities were identified, I was asked to determine whether such fundraising activities were pre-approved by this committee, and whether any donations received were accepted by this committee as required by law. The law in this matter is quite clear. Student activity accounts are authorized by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 47. Appendix one of the report, Mr. Chairman, contains the full section in its entirety, but let me just highlight for you what I think are the pertinent parts of that particular section of the law. Section 47 states in general that the school committee of a district may authorize a school principal to receive money in connection with the conduct of certain student activities and to deposit such money with the school district treasurer into an interest-bearing bank account referred to as the student activity agency account. In addition to such student activity agency account, the school committee may authorize the school district treasurer to establish a checking account referred to as the student activity checking account, to be operated and controlled by a school principal, from which funds may be expended exclusively for student activity purposes for the student activities authorized by the school committee. Such account shall be used for expenditures only, and funds received for student activity accounts may not be deposited directly into such account. On October 15th, 2013, this school committee adopted a student activity fund policy. Portion of the policy, which is Exhibit 2 of the report, Mr. Chairman, states in relevant part as follows. Student funds may be raised to finance activities of authorized student organizations. Student activity funds are considered a part of the total fiscal operation of the district and are subject to the policies established by the school committee and the office of the superintendent. The funds shall be managed in accordance with sound business practice, which include accepted budgetary and accounting practices. Student activity funds shall be expended exclusively for student activity purposes. In addition to the law and the policy clearly setting forth the position that student activity funds ought to be expended exclusively for student activity purposes, the policy sets forth additional procedures by which such expenditures ought to be made. First, the policy establishes account control procedures. Second, it requires the principal to make the deposits within 48 hours of the receipt of revenue to the school's depository account. Third, it requires that all checks ought to be written and signed by the principal. Fourth, it states that expenditures were subject to availability of funds and were only to be paid upon receipt of a disbursement student activities account form. It is this disbursement form that evidences, explains, and accompanies each expenditure. Fifth, the policy establishes that the principal was entrusted to control, operate, and be responsible for the student activity account. And finally, the policy states that the principal could be personally liable for any and all inappropriately expenditures. While it was not the purpose of this investigation to review each of the expenditures for full compliance with the committee's policy, but rather to focus only on the purpose for which each of the expenditures was made, where evidence of such other policy non-compliance becomes clearly evident, such was noted in my report. As previously mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the starting point for this investigation was the compilation of a list of questionable expenditures from the David Proudy High School student activity accounts. After review and discussion, a final determination was made for this investigator to review 93 individual student activity expenditures. Those 93 expenditures are listed in Exhibit 3 of the report. These selected expenditures were reviewed in relation to the three fundamental questions previously identified. One, whether the item purchased or service received was for district purposes; two, whether the item purchased or service obtained was in fact used by the district; and number three, whether the expenditure was for a student activity consistent with committee policy and Massachusetts law. With regard to these expenditures, Mr. Chairman, I interviewed by phone or in person 20 individuals, some more than once, and visited David Proudy High School on several occasions to physically locate numerous purchased items to confirm whether or not such items as purchased were in fact in the possession and custody of the district, and to examine and review hundreds of pages of documents and other materials related to the various expenditures involved. Two basic fact premises were used in my review of these expenditures and in writing this report. First, there is no question that Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 47, requires that money received for student activities be expended exclusively for student activity purposes. Second, there is no question that the committee policy requires that student activity funds be expended exclusively for student activity purposes. Including with my report, Mr. Chairman, is Appendix A, which is this document right here. This document contains a summary of each of the 93 individual expenditures reviewed, a copy of the disbursement form relative thereto, if existing, and any other supporting documentation discovered or provided to me. Upon review of each of the 93 expenditures set forth in Appendix A, I determined to the best of my ability that generally speaking, the 93 expenditures could be broken down into six basic subject categories and one miscellaneous category. Subject categories would be as follows. A, membership dues for organizations and associations; B, entry fees, tournament costs, bowling fees; C, equipment and clothing; D, banquets, dinners, awards, trophies; E, fundraising, gate money, startup costs; F, training, software, staff and assistants; and G, miscellaneous expenditures. If you look at Exhibit 4 of the report, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit 4 organizes each of the itemized 93 individual expenditures into these seven categories. If you look at Exhibit number four, Mr. Chairman, there is a number on the far left-hand side. Those are reference numbers. Reference numbers which will identify for you the itemizations found in Exhibit A. If you were to look at whatever reference number you wanted to reference, if you look at the table of conference in Exhibit A, it will bring you to the backup material found in that particular item. Let me, though, try to summarize for you my findings of those categories. The first category of expenditures involves the expenditure of student activity funds for membership dues which were paid for, paid for membership into a particular association or organization. If you look on Exhibit A, this type of expenditure would include: membership dues for the Massachusetts Secondary School Athletic Directors Association; membership dues for Central Massachusetts Athletic Directors Association; membership dues for the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. In this category, expenditures were made for membership dues used for and received by the district. Such expenditures do not, on their face, however, meet the standard of being an expenditure for student activity purposes. In the end, a fair reading of the evidence collected relative to this group of expenditures would suggest that all such expenditures were not made exclusively for student activity purposes. As you can see on Exhibit 4, the total expenditure amount for this category was $634. The next category, Category B, involves the expenditure of student activity funds for entry fees and tournament costs for high school teams to attend meets or competitions in their particular sport, and for student-paid bowling fees. This category includes, Mr. Chairman, entry fees to Wachusett Regional High School cross-country meet, entry fee for Tantasca Junior Varsity cross-country meet, entry fee for Quabon Regional High School, bowling fees to Bayberry Bowling, practice rounds before golf tournament by the golf team. The expenditure of money from a student activity account for entry fees and tournament costs and/or golf practice rounds is arguably in conformity with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, 47, and committee policy. That is, that the money be used for the express purpose of conducting student activities. Alternatively, however, one might argue that such an expense could be part of an overall athletic budget. In this case, however, in the context of the factual framework of this investigation, these expenditures would appear to be appropriate. With regard to Bayberry Bowling, it is my understanding that the bowling program was part of the school's gym curriculum, and that a payment for this program by students has been ongoing in the district for some time. A fee is collected from students so that the paying students, and apparently only those paying, can participate in such a program as part of gym class. In essence, this is a fee that is paid for a student's participation in an activity that is part of the school's curriculum. The student activity account appears in this instance to have been used simply as a pass-through to pay the curriculum costs associated with the bowling program. Charging a fee for curriculum program and using the student activity account as a financial conduit to operate the program is not an appropriate use of the student activity account. In sum, the evidence would suggest that for the reasons stated above, or the reasons that I stated, the bowling expenditures were inappropriate, while the expenditures for an athletic team's entry fee or practice round are arguably justifiable. Total expenditures for this category, as shown on Exhibit 4, is $7,197. The Bayberry bowling expenditure alone totaled $6,644. The entry fees totaled 553. The next category, Category C, involves the expenditure from student activity funds for equipment or uniform clothing, which is either directly or indirectly used by students and/or coaching staff. This in category includes the following expenditures. The purchase of ComStar wireless headphone system for the football team, foam cover panels for the high jump pit, a high-definition video camera and tripod, 12-pound iron shot fiberglass measuring tape, equipment bags for the track team, a right-angle drill to lower baskets in the gym, baseball equipment, pullovers for the baseball team, pullovers for football coaches, t-shirts for theater program, equipment for baseball team, water for the nurse's office, golf balls for the golf team. The purchase of a wireless headphone system for football coaches, foam cover panels for the high jump pit, a high-definition video camera and a tripod used by athletic teams, a 12-pound iron shot, a fiberglass track measuring tape, and a right-angle drill to lower basketball hoops are expenditures that on their face do not meet the standards of the law or committee policy. These are purchases of athletic equipment that arguably should be made from district budgetary accounts rather than student activity accounts. It should be noted, however, that with the exception of the golf balls, all such equipment was identified and located in the custody or possession of the school. In this case, the evidence established that the purchases were made for and used by the district. As for whether they were made exclusively for student activity purposes, the evidence suggests clearly that they were not. Further, there are several other items within this category which raise questions regarding proprietary purchasing. For example, the purchase of equipments, bags for the track team, equipment and pullovers for the baseball team, pullovers for the football coaches. These items are not student activities. It was stated that many sports teams that David Proudy fundraised to enable them to purchase the type of equipment and uniform accessories identified above. The money received through this fundraising is deposited into the student activity account and then used for student athletes on the various teams. However, there is no evidence that such fundraising by any team was approved by the school committee. I was informed that fundraising has been going on for years, and that no prior approval for any sports team's fundraising was ever obtained from the school committee. While some of these purchases may tangentially benefit the students involved, a strict application of the policy suggests that the expenditures did not conform to the standard of exclusively for student activity purposes, as mandated by committee policy. Further, making expenditures of money in a student activity account for the purchase of equipment and uniforms and team accessories violates the law. Total expenditures for this category, as shown in Exhibit 4, is $8,723.23. The next category, Category D, involves the expenditure of student activity funds for banquets, dinners, awards, trophies. These expenditures are as follows. Category D- Category D is broken down into three subsections. Subsection One concerning banquets and dinners involves the attendance of members at the Southern Worcester County League banquet, catering for an Italian-American Victory Club, at the Italian-American Victory Club, buffets at Spencer County Inn for the football team, and the Leicester Country Club golf tournament and dinner. Using the student activity account to pay for the attendance of six coaches at a Southern Worcester County League banquet on March 7, 2014, in which no students were involved, is not an expenditure for student activity purposes. The expenditure for catering at the Italian-American Victory Club, a breakfast meeting for Central Massachusetts Athletic Directors Association, held on September 16, 2014, is not an expenditure for student activity purposes. Those expenditures use student activity funds for non-district purposes. As such, these expenditures were clearly not consistent with committee policy and in violation of law. The expenditures for the Sunday buffets at the Spencer Country Inn for the football team, and the golf tournament, and dinner at Leicester Country Club are all questionable expenditures. The breakfast buffet is an event paid for by the participants. Money is collected from those attending and is deposited into the student activity account to pay the bill. Within the limits of this investigation, it appears that the money was collected before payment was made to the Spencer Country Inn, and student activity account was used then as a pass-through for payment. As for the golf tournament at the Leicester Country Club, it was stated that this was the intent of the golf tournament to raise money for the football and golf teams. Upfront money was needed, however, to pay for raffle prizes and other prizes to present to those playing in the tournament. This might include golf balls, tees, T-shirts, et cetera. Further, it appears that the money was withdrawn from the account prior to the event to pay for the services provided for by Leicester Country Club. In this sense, the student activity account was used as a means of obtaining some upfront money for expenses to be replaced by the anticipated revenues of the golf tournament. While a specific accounting of the May 17, 2014 golf tournament was not within the purview of this investigation, it should be noted that each person playing in the golf tournament paid $100 per player. The receipt from Leicester Country Club indicates that 84 people played on May 17, 2014, all adults. No students participated in the tournament. In this case, student activity funds were used to advance money needed to sponsor the golf tournament. While the net result of the tournament may have had an overall positive effect on the student activity account, without a full accounting of all income and expenses involved for such an event, procedure which, again, was not within the scope of this investigation, one cannot state such an opinion with any degree of reasonable certainty. For purposes of this investigation, the evidence suggests that expenditures for the Spencer Country Inn buffets and the golf tournament at Leicester Country Club were not made for or used by the district, nor was such an expenditure made for a student activity. As such, these expenditures were not consistent with committee policy and in violation of the law. The total expenditure for this subcategory is $10,240.23. The next subcategory in Category D is awards. This would include roses for senior night, staff jerseys for the Spencer Flag Football League, pizzas for the Spencer Flag Football League, trophies for the Spencer Youth Football Program, baseball and softball plaques, Spencer Flag Football Awards, baseball awards and Understanding and recognizing that there may be some tangential connection to the purchase of a rose, a trophy, or award for a student athlete involved in a sport to a student activity, given the straightforward language of General Law's Chapter 71, 47 and the committee policy, it would appear to me that the expenditure of monies for roses, trophies, and awards from the student activity account appears inappropriate. The purchase of awards and prizes for the Spencer Community Flag Football Program also appear inappropriate. It is my understanding that the football team coordinates a flag football tournament in the fall for youth in the town. I am informed that this is a very popular program, and that all members of the football team are required to assist in running this program. The program runs for approximately 10 weeks. I'm told that the operation of the league was not only considered good volunteer community work for the team, it also served as a fundraiser for the team. Again, no approval from the committee was ever obtained to establish this youth football program as a fundraiser for the high school football program. Participants in the league apparently pay a fee. That money is deposited into a student activity account, and expenses are paid from such revenues. There was no income and expense report for such a program, and the tracking of such income and expenses was not within the purview of this investigation. The evidence in this case, however, clearly suggests that the use of a student activity account to operate a community-wide flag football program is inappropriate. These expenditures appear not to be made for the district or used by the district, and they were not expenditures made for a student activity purpose in the district. Total expenditure amount for this subcategory is $2,196.60. The final category, and subcategory in Category D, is for a track team dinner involving transportation costs for the track team to hold a celebratory dinner at Wright's Farm Restaurant. It appears to be a purchase made for the district, used by the district, and used exclusively for student activity purposes. The evidence would then suggest that this is an appropriate and proper expenditure from the student activity account for the track team. This investigator was informed that the track team raised money for this trip through fundraising of various types throughout the year. Again, there is no indication or evidence that formal approval of such fundraising was ever sought or received by the committee. Total expenditure for this subcategory, shown on Exhibit Four, is $399. The next category, Mr. Chairman, involves the expenditure of, which is Category E in Exhibit Four, involves the expenditure of student activity funds for various fundraising, gate money, and startup costs. This would involve the payment of revenue, of fundraising revenues from MAC Publishing. It would involve the use of the activity fund to provide gate money for the startup of the athletic season. Obviously, it involved startup money for the football golf tournament. It involves raffle tickets to be used at a fundraiser, startup money for cheerleading tournaments, startup monies for the classes of 2015 and 2016 for Spencer Fair, fundraiser custodial cost for a magic show, and golf tournament T-shirts, again, used for a fundraiser. With the exception of money for the classes of 2015 and 2016, all of the expenditures in this category appear to involve money that is either, one, earned by a fundraiser, two, being fronted for a fundraiser, or, three, being used at a tournament or sporting event to make change for the gate fee paid by attendees. Again, the law mandates that the student activity account money be expended exclusively for student activity purposes. Writing a check to MAC Publishing for its share of fundraising efforts is not conducting a student activity. Fronting money for the gate box at a sporting event, or buying raffle prizes or T-shirts for a fundraising event, is not money that is strictly being used to conduct a student activity. Paying money for a custodian for a fundraiser is not a student activity. The evidence suggests that these expenditures, while necessary to run a fundraiser or to be able to make change at an event which charges admission, are not student activities. Such expenditures, even if money is returned or reimbursed at a later date, appear to violate the committee policy in General Law's 71, Section 47. The expenditures for the classes of 2015 and 2016 are for use by those classes in preparing and running a booth in the Spencer Fair, as I understand it. This would appear to be appropriate expenditures, as it is exclusive for a student activity, i.e., the running of class booths at Spencer Fair. Total expenditure for this category in Exhibit Four is $11,411.30. The next category, Category F, involves the expenditure of student activity funds for various training, payments to volunteer staff, purchase of software, and/or payment to assistance. These expenditures include the purchasing of software from a company called Agile Sports Technologies. It involves the payment of a course in fundamentals of coaching for football coaches. It involves a captain's workshop put on by the MIAA. It involves professional services for marching band drill design and choreography workshops for the theater program. It involves band assistance fees, band director assistance fees, a band camp staff fee, the payment of three baseball volunteer coaches, and involves the payment for the Center for Education and Employment Law subscriptions. The Agile Sports Technology expenditures are a coaching software tool used by football and basketball coaches. Student athletes also have the ability to sign into the program, to review game films, highlight their play in a particular game, and study other aspects of a previous game or upcoming event. This software does not appear to be an expenditure exclusively for student activity purposes. This appears to be an expenditure that would be more appropriately be a district budget purchase. Similarly, programs sponsored by the MIAA entitled Fundamentals of Coaching are not student activity expenditures, nor are the expenditures made for a subscription through the Center for Education and Employment Law. The payments to the baseball coaches are also clearly not expenditures for student activity purposes, nor are the expenditures for professional services for the high school band or the school theater programs. For purposes of this investigation, the evidence suggests that there are inappropriate, that these are inappropriate expenditures from student activity accounts. While the benefit of the services provided were received and used by the district, they were not expenditures for student activity purposes. Instead, they were expenditures for professional services rendered by individuals. The one expenditure in this section which appears to be appropriate is MIAA Captain's Workshop. This was an expenditure which apparently allowed several students and one coach to attend a captain's workshop. An argument can alternatively be made, however, that even this expenditure, because it included a coach, was not exclusively for student activity purposes. In the end, a fair reading of the evidence collected in this matter would suggest that the expenditures from a student activity account for the training of coaches, payment to volunteer staff or assistants, purchases of software, and/or paying for professional services violates the law and the committee policy. The expenditure amount for this category, as shown on Exhibit Four, is $9,142.78. The final category, Mr. Chairman, Category G, is a catch-all for miscellaneous expenditures that did not fit well, least in my opinion, into the other category. These expenditures include the sponsorship of a golf hole at a clock golf tournament, cost of an EMT at a cheerleading tournament, sound production costs for the theater program, costs of bulk mailing to students, cost of 700 stamps for general mailing, cost of bulk postage, BJ's membership, parking permit money, and money involving the Sunshine Fund. The expenditure in these miscellaneous categories are generally funds which were used to pay for items that appear to have violated the requirements for student activities account. Items such as an edible arrangement for a player's ill mother, paying for stamps for a mailing program regardless of the purpose of the mailing, or paying for sponsorship of a golf hole at a tournament are clearly outside the definition of exclusively for student activities. Furthermore, using the student activities account as a pass-through to account, to purchase BJ's wholesale club memberships for teachers and staff, or gift certificates for teachers, even though such expenditures were reimbursed to the account at least in part, are clearly outside the definition of the student activities. The evidence suggests that while some expenditures may have been received and used by the district in a tangential sense, from the standpoint of the law or committee policy, there are no expenditures within this miscellaneous category which appear to be appropriate for the purposes of the committee policy and the law. Total expenditures amount to this category, as shown on Exhibit Four, is $20,731.40. Mr. Chairman, in sum, the evidence obtained as a result of this investigation reveals that strict compliance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 71, Section 47, and the committee's policy did not occur in over 90% of the 93 expenditures investigated. The 93 expenditures totaled $70,675.54. Of that sum, only eight expenditures totaling $2,572 could be, in this investigator's best determination. After a fair review of the evidence, classified as meeting all three of the criteria previously set forth, and therefore considered valid expenditures for student activity purposes. The remaining 85 expenditures, which totaled $68,103.54, based on a fair reading of the evidence obtained as a result of this investigation, were expenditures for non-student activity-related purposes, and therefore in violation of Massachusetts General Law's 71, 47, and committee policy. Additionally, based on evidence obtained during this investigation, several of the expenditures reviewed raised legal questions beyond the scope of this investigation. As such, it is recommended that the findings of this report be referred to the district's appointing authority, District Treasurer, and the District Council for further review to determine whether any additional investigation is warranted relative to violations of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30B, Chapter 268A, Chapter 149A, or federal estate income tax laws. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Attorney Hennigan. At this point, I would like to ask Counsel Dean Moskis what would be your recommendation at this stage?
Mr. Chairman, the investigating officer has found a violation of law. He's also found a violation of committee policy. He's also found a violation of committee policy. Based on the evidence he's collected, there is an issue of probable cause relative to whether employees of this district complied with the law. In addition, he's raised that beyond the scope of his investigation, there may be violations of the competitive bidding law, Massachusetts ethics law. The Massachusetts laws dealing with employment, we had payments made to people where there's no employee status who were supposed to be volunteers. He found that payments were made for them for services rendered, and I think only in one case, there was no employment records having been created or taxes withheld for those payments. So, based on that, this investigation report, I recommend that the investigation be referred to the appointing authorities. Under the Education Reform Act, the superintendent and the principal are the appointing authorities for the district. In addition, he has raised issues relative to the need for further accounting, and I think that should be referred to the treasurer of the district. And in addition, as I just previously noted, that he's raised issues about violations of other laws and that the district council should review that to determine if there are violations of those laws. I would like to make clear here that this is an investigation report. It's an official document. He has been very scrupulous in not naming any persons. We have to protect people's privacy, people's rights. These are only investigation, only determining probable cause of the possible violations. And therefore, I caution that no names be mentioned and that the report be referred to the appointing authorities, the treasurer, and district council to follow up and take the appropriate action necessary to respond to this report.
Having heard from counsel, any members have any questions of counsel? If not, the chair would entertain a motion for referral to administration. No questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Counsel, at this point, is there a need to go into executive session from here?
There are two additional matters, Mr. Chairman, that need to be discussed in executive session. I believe it's been properly posted, and I recommend that an executive session be called by roll call vote on those particular two other matters that the investigating officer and I as district council wish to present to the school committee executive session.
So, the chair would entertain a motion to investigate alleged charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints pursuant to subsection 5, Chapter 30A, 21A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Angela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy. On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.